So, that's my intention. Uh, I mean, I don't know. I have some, I don't think there's, uh, no, I mean, I'm just talking about. Don't for all of the, uh, she's not, uh, 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 uh. Uh, so to be honest. Uh, uh, uh. Thank you. Well, this is going to be, uh, uh. Uh, which, uh, what, uh, what it could be. Uh, uh. And like, okay, my, uh, uh, uh. Um, uh, uh. Uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Oh, uh, yeah, and then, uh, I don't know. But, uh, uh, uh. Uh, what is the, uh, uh? Uh, uh, uh. That's why you're, uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Now, we can rise to the five, uh, to be, uh, uh. So this is part of the economy state council, and we come up to the front. As a legion to the five, United States of America, into the republic where we can stand, one nation under God, in the best of all, every day and justice for all. Thank you very much, and we find this time to be. You may leave, brother. And the law is, uh, uh. I'm Casey Lawler. This raise, we recognize that the teachers at Economy Elementary drive the challenge students to reap their full academic and social potential for success beyond the classroom. Only daily so best theory and provide students with different differentiated instructions to meet their individual learning needs. Our teachers need regularly to review data from the economy lessons in grades three, four, and high school things, they have to test. On the K S A in English, Spanish, German, Math, and Science. We are looking forward to our perfect attendance during work here, and honor reward. In honor of reward, we want to enjoy a weekend. In addition, high praise of, for, and fellow real freedom, receiving gift cards to bond in your home. I welcome the activity included the year of the cup course, our stars who will win for the annual program. We get paid by middle of the month, they take it strong for our star program in high management. So when if we see gift cards from McDonald's, High School, and more ones. We have a lot to look forward to, uh, and create in the home to them. The noble agriculture, time, the math, science, after school, favorite talent, uh, in the engineer, family sponsor, right, and eighty-five, um, are few of the upcoming stories. The P T A has been very active in sponsoring the wheelie rodeo of their, and their. We are looking forward to the fundraiser, Halloween party, holiday, in the shop, in the harbor with us. The P T A fundraising, fundraising event, provide our school with additional opportunity. For experience, to learn and talk about. We would like to extend a, a special thank you to all the Economy Elementary parents, and the community friends who are, and who support. Economy Elementary is the best place to be. For the school that has found, in fact, in fact, now, we make, uh, funding, which is, uh, that does not matter.
That is something to, something to find, telling another company, yeah. And just probably thank you. That, that is a company great. Thank you, do any questions? And for our, thank you. Um, may I have a motion to accept the motion of Monday August ninth, which is not voting and not voting on Monday August can work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All favor? All votes? Very. May I have a motion to accept the joint report for Canadian obvious to thousand twenty thirty?
Um.
Okay. All favor?
Uh.
All votes? Very. And do you have any amendments? Alright, um. I have the motion to approve. From we've had.
All set.
All favor?
Uh.
All votes? Motion to approve. Now, we must provide enforcement for speaking under running the budget below the ground.
Uh, yes, there are faulty items that we had last week. We do have one, two, three, four new items. Uh, this week will go then quickly summarize. Uh, disabled veterans patent packs attention and recommend to prove it disabled veterans packs attention for properly located at two sixty Oliver Lane in Freedom PA subject to state veterans admission, uh, continued surf activity for eligibility and continued use at the attitude of home state. Discussion. Number nine, P A head fater. It recommends to improve the contract service between the January School District from D N and Pennsylvania, which is fater's clearinghouse. See, it's a computer dot net for the twenty three, twenty four school year and a cost of two thousand one hundred seventy five dollars. Discussion. Number ten disposal of unused items is recommended to dispose of the donation of unused items from eighteen fifty five vendor road and P A previously owned by the district passport, or policy seven of six point one disposal surplus property and hospital equipment, there is a penance A attached to all those items. Last one is the sofa sign. It recommends to approve the January part of placing sofa sign in front of the fuel house on district property. By the way, I could just give a quick good um, girl manager simple and uh, using some grand five seventy seven besides, um, we placed about five hundred twelve. Looking for possible location one as well as uh, on that's important being something designed here. Uh, we look in front of the fuel house itself, what we do, that's out of the area for any other one track in the city. Um, and anyway, you can solve that because it's solar. Like a solar power, so put a little bit in after once you go down and sit on then then walk it down further than that, um, that you can it also up maybe I mean, it gives you that but we would be able to put certain events get out situation, which is happening. It's not if we're able to to for this girl to get up and that obviously different side of things. I have to there we go. And then these would scan throughout, um, throughout the see what we ask for us to allow energy wise, but in that and now there will be actually colors or whatever they go to really and it's and also off the earth and
I'll be here starting with the for twenty one twenty five, he bought but we cannot still hardly see that especially not on the party. Um, they have a chance hopefully to learn found out each year will lot.
Yeah, he uh, initial thought obviously done to one of the subjects. Um, and he said that's just bad. Tell himself from he can source that um, to make sure that's not I can share your feedback with that. You have that you have not talked to me. Just sending the feedback and also but no suggestions. Just bring that, I just know our efforts to log that is likely
I, I like it.
Right, so it's open that now, um, installed some um, so um, just have um, uh, group also that did spread this Yeah, I have a motion to provide number one or eleven as
Okay. Can you word session any further? I will help you. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, yes, her favor.
Yes.
He has yeah, take them, yes, yeah, so now he and I got, yeah, we're looking here. Thank you. Uh, I want to come on a relationship with that to the person.
Okay.
Thank you. Under the same role in that, he loves and solidly motion to satisfy this one percent of any question, but I think any more to that? I will help you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, her favor.
Yes.
He has and much, yeah, so now he and I got, yeah, right between. Thank you. And first now, I'm kind of expecting my questions.
I'm president of all the um, the dirt age thing to violence. Two point nine, initially last week, number eight, but I'm recommend the whole group, yeah, the page on hundred forty number nine, four, one. For underneath the lead, for the third A, so I have a job on pretty far in my school year. I have number nine, that then I recommend to Brad five, forty dollar, three thousand. Being currently part of one policy, print print five. And seven, number one, four, thousand twenty three, thousand nine, twenty four weeks. Number twelve, also doing speech teaching. Uh, recommend to further the following, to further the teachers, um, and we think of the thousand, five, three, four, master many with the current guarantee, that's that for drug training. He says, then respond by trying to offer lawyers that constantly training. But can economy elementary with Michelle Pezmar and her people. They are capable of school and Michael that. My name. Four. I will be also reading number thirteen. Uh, the administrator of quality documents. He's our president, Mr. Martin, Dr. Joseph W. Manuel the consideration for group test and producing salaries in two thousand twenty three, twenty four school year based on evaluation for these about twenty two and twenty four year. Yeah, look that and make a motion to present that a lot of the pain and keep that. Uh.
I will help you. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Her favor.
Um. Yes, on all except number six, I would stand like twelve. That's standing, mentioning my wife, thirteen, yeah.
Yeah. I, yeah. Patty?
Yes.
And I got, yeah. Well, yeah, thank you. I got a question, she came up to have an idea.
Yeah, I, I don't know what it's about, but I do want to know, um, there was a discussion on the public last week about adoption education, um, some of the firm, um, and and one item that there wasn't necessarily a, a way to for during that discussion and that part of the public, the highlight, um, is was really relative to a former provider for transportation. Um, and I do want to make clear this to be part of the current conversation, um, that both transportation suddenly unexpectedly, it's terribly reaches the contract with average, um, in the middle of summer. And as involved, we have issued a law to respect that, um, it's difficult to speak to where that goes from here, um, because of the financial condition, um, and I, and I don't believe they're providing purposes to anyone. What, do you want to make clear that the, the district went through rate on very quick so that happened and to find provider and that, that so to be clear, the former provider setting that the arm is going to
I just wanted to, um, thank everybody, uh, all of our students for coming today to Columbia Elementary, that was excellent. And obviously, since it's a school year, like next coming, that's great graduations, all students and all, all of our excellent students and students, just want to thank you.
Is not time for all of the people on page just to present any facts to comment on the concern that's been expressed on the section now on starts on the day they're first met in Adam's higher speaking. He first will be about three minutes. Okay, Mark. May they A D V D for A D four, may I over bring bro on the um, so I have a question on the, um, increase in salary by three percent. I'd like to know what those stuff the agents were to meet the requirements that I have three percent. I often would like to know, um, why you are giving that rate and that's about five thousand dollars rate, which is the same for the uniforms. Uh, that was, that we were talking about last week. The other thing is, is the superintendent, you, a superintendent, strong description hiring staff. We don't have hiring staff, they're allowed to move in. Managing budgets, so are you telling me that that three percent rate is longest approved or that three percent based on last years was justified, um, by managing the budget by cutting your staff, being that's the only part that you have to follow? That was you moved on. The other question is monitoring student success. Where are we with monitoring student success? Have you met A Y P? When was the last time you met A Y P? Where are we in that? And if that is what you base that three percent rate on for last year to give you A Y P in all those areas. Next question is vision of the district, of the vision of the district to gain chaos. To have these students and the staff in arms and not know and have the full of the names of these students. That would you base that three percent on? And where are we with the financial scheme or aren't we budgeted actual? How's that look? Where are we looking? Like I said last week, I knew that three percent was going to become somewhere. It always is, if I'm running a school. That's going to come down to the budget review and what's coming in with less. That approval just shows your staff that they're not worthy of the leadership that they're asking for me to help them back.
I'm not having given the contract as well with no discretion. On it, the only, uh, variable from your year is its performance as the board judges it as a whole and up against the, the goal that they collaboratively set. There were twenty six goals that Dr. Pascola was asked to um, interact for last year, the board had a whole foundation to distinguish um, which is a high as well and there was nothing under three percent. That three percent is less than virtually every other category of employee raises in the district in this year or any other. But I appreciate the comments the board will again and does every year work with Dr. Pascola to determine next year or this time, because goals um, they'll work together to collaborate. Those goals is resolved in a way that will address the, the need that the district as, as the board views them and I'm sure take things with calm, the, the feedback from that on part, let me tell you one of the two questions. So as far as your questions on what form of goals were, uh, I just, I should be done with twenty six. Um, all of your sure. All of your topics that you brought up, so there was, there was a goal for driving budgeting. There was a goal, a goal for driving, um, score, however, the score is not coming anytime from the inauguration. And so that is something that followed or went into the following year. So that goal will go into twenty three, twenty four school year and therefore good part, um, superlative right which is put in the um, there are a lot of goals in there, but not science management and, um, also another one about staff report. But I do appreciate, um, all of your comments, uh, before we move into goals uh, for this year, with Dr. Pascola, he started being, um, trying, but we've got the windows for the board members, so I appreciate any just question, just question, but those are in some any other what?
Well, Sean Doogee, I'm William Olson Andrew. Uh, first, I want to start with two problems. I intended your promotion Friday night on first game, I think, too. Since we live in Android. And I'm delighted to make the staff to their constant perimeter check. That's all you, this part of asking all of for the visiting signs that were, that is positively moving way that she wanted everybody to see. And I do appreciate that. The other thing is Miss John, she's a great teacher at the school. Uh, she teaches search studies and science and we had a little extra, but I have a couple of these, which my daughter, it's and I got an email privately, it was something that my daughter has been improving. However, to the day the day on the way home from school around three o'clock, my eleven year old daughter was assaulted in the school bus by another student. I had the video, the video said to me, last month, I had a single video. My daughter was punched more than a dozen times in the top and in the back of her head. Two seats behind the bus stop. The bus was stopped, the bus driver did not stay or too long. I think for future to help this, I think there's assault or school bus, the bus should stop and the police should be called, leaving. Because we had filed police report to the economy borough because the assault happened just outside of, uh, it's where the freight road and all involved was sadly. Uh, Mr. Burden has already been, uh, in touch with us. Um, my son, my thirteen year old son was the only person to enter the business. I just got Dr. Paul about my daughter being assaulted on the bus last week. She was assaulted by a little boy in the back of the bus. She was moved to the front of the bus by myself and my wife. We asked her to sit in front of the bus. She was getting on the third floor speed from the car when a other student physically attacked her while she was on the floor. He went to the video I showed you. But these are things that they can't help others. I looked at everything before I come down there to look at the fighting policies. And I'm, I'm not backed in the belt from this because this assault didn't was that's meant to be shown. I know we all had super cross, but the same child assaulted my daughter, assaulted the bus with my daughter. Today, when they got off the bus, she tried to breathe and speak and breathe, uh, postpartum to reengage with my daughter when she threatened to have her cousins beat up my son. So if something happens to my children, that the school bus stopped because there's not a crossing law or someone there. Who is accountable for that? Because the school bus who are supervisor by the school and by the police department. And for the record, I actually went to know this term rule from Chief Aluga that a first one you have there, the first period misdemeanor. That leaves out the submissive to the bill and that has been resolved. Additionally, other convictions relating to minors to crimes of dishonesty are barriers to employment within the district, either district or this or other position, I would do not without a conversation. I, I identify as rehabilitation. I served my time. What you were referring to relating to minors to crimes of dishonesty are more than twenty years old. The misdemeanor that you had listed, this result may be wide if this is more than fifteen years old. Nobody wants to have a conversation. I, I'm being unaccountable for the state's errors. And I'm having a hard time swallowing. I recently got introduced with post incarcerations. Stress disorder. So, yes. Maybe you guys should educate yourselves a little bit on that and you can have somebody trying to volunteer to help rather than discriminate and hold them out without a conversation. I'm here to help. You all had a very long ever battle against, well, you just sat up and turned your backs to be done. I'm willing to do it more volunteer based. If I'm willing to do this without being played, or this is something that needs done through this community. But I don't, I don't work in the world from here, but I do follow enough of the female, that, that we like that like and know more about, you know, how we get past the barriers. Because it's, it's possible, this is something that the school has. I'm not, I'm not doing this. And the fifteen million steps to me so far for suicide in this school. It was seventy three, thirty percent, percentage of anything is I'm
Yeah, I'm a lot bigger than I've been, um, you're going to be in the thank you. And even I, I'm with the speech, 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 and I'm probably kidding, however, um, A B C Jacobar, A B C Trinidad, Jacobar, and I think that R V came along, so I'm sure that
Mister Hurley, I'm watching the video, it's happened to my son. My son has already been suspended. My son could suspend within that three days and this happened at three o'clock.
So, yeah, if you have, if you have to see us, maybe that's great. That's fair play. But I'm trying to also try to make this and so
I, I don't know. I, I emailed Mr. Hurley the video that I have. I sent that to an officer, said to the officer in the crime department. And just for clarification, who's responsible and accountable if something happens in the bus stop or another incident happened in one of the school bus? Who's accountable? That A B C Trinidad? Is that at school or is that at the I'm just trying to understand what, because I'm held accountable to accountability, so I'm holding my children and I'm trying to educate them the best I can to do the right thing, but it's kind of hard way doing the right thing seems to be, uh, against the law.
We can be kind of small. I've had
Is there a way that I would be applying to that? So, so as a concerned parent, we can express that?
I think that's that, uh, that, that
Okay.
Any other questions? You have kind of um, should mention our uh, all favor?
I don't know.
All votes? Any other things? They are not safe for the child.